The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council from Monday, November 15th, 2021 will please come to order. To those of you who are in attendance this evening, good evening. If you would, please take a minute to check your cellphone to make sure that it is on silent or vibrate, and we'll appreciate that. To those of you who are participating remotely, welcome. In this evening, we are once again asking members of the public to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing the public comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank everyone for their cooperation. With that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
We have eight present in person and one virtual.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of November 1st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? In hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrations, or memorial.
Yes, Mr. President. We have a letter from the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding their recommendations from their November 9th meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above reference date, at which time the following use variances were considered. Appeal number 2021-29, an appeal submitted by the Vineyard Church requesting a use variance for 635 East 12th Street to allow a parking lot for a mobile medical clinic. The board with a vote of 5 to 0 recommended approval, subject to the following condition: the use variance will be limited to a one-year period. Appeal number 2021-40, an appeal submitted by Cinemark USA, Inc., requesting a use variance for 6424 Grape Road to allow an indoor shooting range as part of retail firearm sales business in C2 Shopping Center Commercial District. The board with a vote of 5 to 0 recommended approval. This is signed by Kerry Myers, Secretary to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee nor any ordinances on first reading, so we will move into resolutions.
Resolution number R. 2021-26, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, introducing an ordinance for annexation, adopting a written fiscal plan and a definite policy for annexation for the property located at 12452 and 12434 Lincoln Way East, Osceola, Indiana, including the adjacent State Road 23 public right-of-way.
Thank you. We will commence with the public hearing on resolution 2021-26. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward to the podium.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. The parcel you're considering this evening is 1.95 acres. This is the Bruno's Pizza and Foxfire Safety Properties that are located directly east of the intersection of Bittersweet and Lincoln Way. The property is 90% contiguous to the city. As required by law, we have to prepare a fiscal plan for annexation. That's what is before you this evening. The fiscal plan, we're required to identify any capital expenditures or operational expenditures required as a result of the annexation. There are no capital expenditures, and all applicable departments have reviewed and have identified they can serve the two acres within their existing budget. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone present with us this evening in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please go forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the questions.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yep.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2021-27, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 635 East 12th Street. This is a use variance to allow parking lot for mobile medical clinic at 635 East 12th Street.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-27. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Schaefer. I'm with Aben Marsh. Our address is 315 West Jefferson in South Bend, representing Vineyard Church. And I appreciate your time this evening. Also, would just like to briefly state that we really appreciate Mr. Prince, his staff, and the Board of Public Works, who worked with us on this particular situation, granted us a temporary event application, which allowed us to kind of start this process and see how it works while we were going through the use variance process. We are asking for a use variance for a one-year period to allow the parking of a mobile medical unit on property that's owned by Vineyard Church. This mobile medical unit serves somewhere between three to five patients a day. It's not a high-traffic use. Serves one patient at a time, and it will be parked every Friday, is the plan, for a one-year period. Vineyard has future plans for the property. They've had a presence in the neighborhood for a number of years and would like to develop a physical presence in the neighborhood. That's why we're asking for this, for a one-year period. We believe between now and when that period expires, Vineyard will be moving forward with establishing that physical presence in the neighborhood. Ken, answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Where is Vineyard Church located at? I mean, what's their physical address now?
Sure. Their main campus is on Jackson Road, just west of Bremen Highway. They've operated a community center in a rental space that I believe they rent from the Housing Authority, and they'd like to eventually open a full-fledged standalone community center on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Vineyard Church has done a lot in the community over the years. It's aware of the name of the church. So if you would express my appreciation for the work that they do, I just was curious about fundraising. Are they in a fundraising campaign now to build a building there? And does the future plan include building a building on that site?
I think yes, they'd like to build a building on that site. My understanding is they are working on fundraising right now to make that happen as quickly as possible. This particular property was actually donated to them, and so they really view it as a great opportunity to, rather than continuing to rent space, build a larger space that can better serve the needs of the community in that neighborhood.
And then just a quick follow-up. So the mobile medical unit that's there, is that a unit that's staffed by members of the Vineyard Church parish, or is it affiliated with a health organization?
It is. It's affiliated with a not-for-profit out of Elkhart. RETA is the name of the not-for-profit, and they have licensed medical staff that are there that operate the mobile medical unit. So it's a partnership between one not-for-profit and another not-for-profit.
What is the name, RETA?
RETA, R-E-T-A, RETA.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. Will this be by appointment only, or walk-ins available?
The vast majority of the patients are by appointment only. Now, part of the reason they want to locate there is to make it possible for people who have transportation issues to be able to walk in as well. But again, it's expected to be a pretty low-volume, low-traffic situation. Thus far, in the three, I believe, three weeks that they've operated, I think three-quarters of the patients have been appointments, and I believe they've had two patients who have been walk-ins.
And just to clarify, it will be only there on Fridays, not during the week?
That's correct.
So they'll pick up and pull it away?
Yes, sir. Yep, drive-in and drive-out.
And what are the hours?
I believe they usually arrive around 9:00 a.m. and normally leave around 4:00 p.m.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Schaefer, good evening. What types of medical issues does this mobile unit see to? Are they just general practitioner ailments?
Mostly dealing with a lot of prenatal care, a lot of prenatal care, you know, no, I'm an engineer. My wife's the nurse. She would have the better words for this. But a lot of prenatal care, a lot of young men and young women with family issues, family planning issues, that sort of thing. But the organization started a lot with healthy mothers, healthy prenatal care, that sort of thing. They've sixes spanned it out, two services, for example, SDD testing for young men and young women, that sort of thing. So, but that's kind of the basis of the organization, is helping out young men and young women, a lot of prenatal care, a lot of healthy mothers.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Sir, just a couple of follow-ups. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Compton.
No, that's fine. I understand the disconnect here. Mr. Schaefer, I'm remote here tonight. This is kind of unusual for me to, I don't normally think of a church as being, running a medical clinic, although I can see, you know, for people of low means and low income, and that's a neighborhood that certainly has some of that. But help me understand, is this something that this church has been involved with for a long time? Are there other ventures outside of your normal church that this group is involved in? I'm just curious. I don't oppose this at all, but I'm just curious as to the connection.
Sure. Vineyard Church owns the property, and they're allowing another not-for-profit RETA to operate the medical clinic. RETA is, again, a separate organization that is supported by a lot of different churches. For example, I happen to live in Elkhart, and my church in Elkhart is a big supporter of RETA as well. So I think it's just a, in this particular situation, Vineyard has had a relationship with RETA for a number of years, I think as a lot of other churches have had, and RETA expressed a desire to have a mobile medical clinic and have a better presence in this neighborhood. Vineyard had this church, or Vineyard had this property donated to them, and the two parties kind of came together on this particular situation. So this is more Vineyard providing a venue for another organization to do their ministry work.
Good explanation, thank you. I appreciate that. I have not heard of this medical group, and it sounds like it, Christian organizations are supportive of this clinic, and they go out and do good deeds in the community for people who, like I said, maybe of means, of lesser means, and need the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions? And then, sir, just a couple of follow-ups. First of all, thank you for the information, and thank you to Vineyard for the work that they're doing in the community. Although you've only been involved in this for a short time, they have only been involved in this for the short time, I'm curious, are you aware of, and you may not even know this, but are you aware of any operational issues? Anything that they've had to adjust or change as they've dipped their toe in this water to make it an appealing activity in the neighborhood?
So, I mean, the biggest things that we've operationally changed, first of all, the first day they were there, they put out a flag, and the zoning department gently told us that we can't do that, which is fine, and we've resolved that issue. Operationally, as part of our request for the BZA, we did ask for a gravel driveway to get in and out initially that were parking on the grass. A couple Fridays ago, when we had a rainy Friday, it was two tow trucks and about an hour and a half to get the RV out. So we are going to do a gravel driveway. Beyond that, I think they would say it's probably been a little bit of a slow start, but part of it is just establishing that they're here in the neighborhood and willing to work with the residents. Like I said, I believe over two or three Fridays, they've only seen about eight patients so far. They think that'll grow a little bit, but again, it's just a matter of establishing a presence in the neighborhood.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I know, I'd be curious, or I'd be pleased to receive, and perhaps others would be as well, if there is a flyer or some document that Vineyard or RETA could provide us to, you know, help us understand more about what they're doing, and then perhaps pass the information along to others. That might be good for you to send it to the Clerk's office, and then we could circulate that amongst ourselves. You brought up the driveway, and although I know that that is not an issue that's in front of us this evening, and that will be determined as a separate variance later on down the road, just out of curiosity, is the working plan at this point for the gravel driveway to remain a part of the property after building is erected and things expand, or is this a temporary measure?
The gravel driveway is also just for a one-year period. So, you know, a year from now, like I said, our hope and expectation is we are working through the construction process of building a full-time community center with a paved parking lot that will likely have room for this same organization to operate within it, and not necessarily with the mobile unit, or perhaps have the mobile unit parked on the parking lot. So no, our goal and our expectation is that the gravel driveway and the use of the property is only going to be for a year, and then we will move on from there.
Fantastic. Well, and then, you know, last but not least, not so much a question as a comment, the way that the pictures that are attached to the staff report depict the location of the RV, it looks like it's a fair distance away from the house that's immediately to the south of this location, and at the end of the year, when, you know, you hope, we hope, all goes well, and you're back in front of the council for the extension of this use, stands to reason that, you know, one of the things I think we'll be interested in is to hear from all the neighbors about how it has gone, but in particular, that neighbor who's most directly proximate. You know, I have no reason to believe that you and the folks involved won't be good neighbors, but I think it's important that this not only be good for the people providing the service, but it'd be good for that immediate neighborhood and the people who live around here, so, live around there. So hopefully, that's what we'll hear over the year, and if you can, you know, do what you can to pass that along to your client, that being a good neighbor, I think, will be important, not just for their business model, but for their relationship with Mishawaka. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir. We will do that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone here with us this evening physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Then are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none? Oh, Mrs. Volker?
Thanks. I just wanted to say I'm on the website, the RETA website, and it just looks like a really great program. And the other thing is, they, just following up on my fundraising question, it looks like they have a capital campaign for a building in Elkhart that's fully funded. So it sounds to me like it's a sound organization that's doing good work, and I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2021-28, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 6424 Grape Road. This is a use variance to allow indoor gun range as a part of a retail firearm sales business.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-28. Anyone physically present who wishes to speak in favor, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ken Knuckles. I'm with Development Management Group out of Nashville, representing Cinemark tonight, who are the current property owners, and also representing our client, who, Compton Addy, who will be the new owners and developers for the project, and I may have somebody on, Kevin Ali on remotely, not sure, from Shoot Point Blank, the tenant. But what we're proposing here, this is the old Cinemark Movie Theater site, 6424 Grape Road. We are proposing to purchase the property and completely redevelop it. The movie theater building has since been removed. We're going to essentially take up all the existing parking lot and any other improvements, come back in there with a new 15,000-square-foot building, parking, all of that. So that's kind of our overall, big-picture plan of what we have intending for the property. The Shoot Point Blank, who are the tenants here? They basically have three components. Their primary business is sale firearms, firearm accessories, that sort of things. But a critical part of what they do as a business is also indoor ranges, where people can use those for training, for learning how to use weapons, for a lot of law enforcement, local, state, and federal use their facilities for certifying and for training as well. But it's, their company is very strongly based off of the element of safety. So they don't like selling guns to people that don't know how to use guns. They're big on making sure that anybody that purchases a gun in their business knows how to use the gun safely. So that's, in addition to that, they also have instructional classrooms in every one of their locations, too, where they have safety courses, those kinds of things as part of that as well. As you guys may be aware, this is a C2 zoning district, which allows the retail sale of the guns and ammunition and stuff by right. So what we're here to talk with you guys about tonight is our request to get a special use approval to allow the indoor ranges. I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Belovich?
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. What type of weapons will you be selling, and what type of weapons will be allowed to be fired in the range once it's constructed?
Okay. Four answers, Kevin on?
Yeah, Ken, I'm right here.
Okay, good. Did you catch the question?
Sir, my name is Kevin Ali. I'm with Shoot Point Blank, which will soon be Range USA. We're changing our name. We sell handguns, and we sell rifles as well. In the range, you can shoot up to a .308 caliber rifle. You cannot shoot a .50 cal, you cannot shoot .300 wind mag. Handguns and hunting rifles are 99% of what gets shot there. We do sell AR-15s, and you can shoot those on the range as well.
Okay. No Class III weapons of any kind?
No, sir. No, sir. No, incendiary rounds, no steel-tipped rounds, no round touches that.
And so a first-time buyer, if I understand the presentation correctly, a first-time purchaser of a handgun or a rifle would be eligible to have safety training at the indoor range?
Well, we try to sell people, or offer and sell them basic handgun safety courses. If they haven't had any training whatsoever, we're hesitant to just send them out with a firearm and ammunition and say, "Good luck." We have a range safety officer in the range at all times, and if it's not crowded, our range safety officer can help someone new with the basics of a handgun. But we strongly recommend either a group class or an individual lesson before someone goes off and starts using a handgun. Last year, we educated over 75,000 people in some form or fashion of gun safety classes, and those could be a concealed carry class, could be a basic handgun class. It's in all of our 32 locations, and then also, we have an online educational program as well. But all those facets, in total, we educated over 75,000 people last year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Belovich. Other questions? Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any type of background check on a person that purchases a firearm?
Absolutely, and Kevin can speak to that a little bit more.
No one, no one buys a weapon without an FBI background check, and we even go further than federal law. So federal law says, the Brady Bill says, that after three days of waiting for the ATF FBI 4473 background check to return, if we haven't gotten a clean answer after three days, we are allowed to let that individual leave with that firearm. We will not do that. We don't do it in any of our stores. If we don't have a clear-cut green light from the ATF and that 4473 background check, no one leaves the store with a firearm. And that is over and above federal law. And there's a basket full of rules that we have on for ourselves that are stricter than federal law. The sale of bump stocks, we've never done it, never will. The sale of partially completed lowers, which is a piece of an AR-15, if it's not completed, it's not serialized. Some places sell these 80% complete, someone can complete them very easy, and they have a gun that the ATF does not know about. We've never sold that product, nor will we ever sell it. So we have a number of rules that we do that are above and beyond federal law.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer, and I commend you for your precautions that you take in selling firearms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons.
Thanks, sir.
Other questions? A couple, and since this is morphed into a group presentation, I'm not sure who best to address this to, but I'm sure one of you will be able to field it. The staff report and some of the supplementary information that you've provided to the council touches on some of the enhanced measures that you're going to take to ensure safety with regard to the range itself. So I'm going to ask you to summarize that for the public here and participating remotely. Let's start out by talking about projectiles, and what will be done to reinforce the range and the building itself so that there isn't, so that it's safe for the range to be located in this spot?
Yeah, and I think some of the materials I provided talked about bulletproof glass, rolled steel, bulletproof rubber, I think, is what, Kevin can explain it much better, but...
Yeah, let me take a stab at it, Ken. The bullet trap system we use is what the US government puts in their military installations. The shooting stalls that we use are either bulletproof steel, or they're bulletproof grade-three glass. Our building is a concrete box inside of a concrete box. So the shooting range is completely encapsulated. It's so encapsulated that we won't violate your noise ordinance on our retail floor. That's how tight, thick, and sealed up that room is. We could carry on a normal conversation on the retail floor while people are shooting, and we could talk just fine. The range is set up where there are steel baffles, so if someone has a misfire, it goes high, it goes low, it goes to the side. It is encapsulated in that area where that projectile cannot escape the range, let alone escape the building.
Kevin, you might also want to talk, too. I know sometimes questions come up about the ventilation systems and stuff.
Ken, I'm going to get to that in a moment, but if I can dot the i... Ken, I'm gonna get to that in a moment, but if I can dot the i and cross the j in this element of it. And, you know, I appreciate that information, and again, you've shared a wealth of really helpful information to someone who has never visited one of these facilities in particular, so I appreciate that. That sounds good to me, but based upon the experience that you've had with more than 30-some odd locations throughout the country, even with these enhanced measures having been taken, have you had a documented occurrence where a projectile, despite every measure that you've taken, has been able to breach that capsule and get outside of the range?
Not a one.
Okay.
Zero cases of a projectile escaping the shooting range, let alone the building.
Fantastic, thank you. And then you brought up noise, and that was gonna be the second one before we get to the exhaust, the second issue that I wanted to probe a little further on. What I understood you to say, can you, what I understood you to say is, with regard to the enhanced measures that you're gonna take with respect to noise, that should lessen the audible impact of the range for an individual who is on the sales floor inside the building, correct?
Very much so. That is exactly what we're trying to communicate, is on our retail floor, you can carry on a normal conversation without having to raise your voice when people are shooting. Outside the building, it will not be silent. It will be, it will be negligible. It'll be tiny. It will be nowhere near violating your noise ordinance. The highway noise that we'll be sitting on will be much louder than the noise emitted from our building.
Okay. And you anticipated my next question. So if I am an employee of an adjacent business or someone who is in a vehicle outside of your building, I will be able to hear gunfire, but it'll be, is it fair to say that that would be vastly reduced in decibels from even what I would experience inside of your store?
Oh, my, yes. So remember, solid concrete walls will have layers of insulation on the roof, will have this, this sound absorbing foam sprayed inside the range called K-13. Will have sound absorbing and bullet absorbing rubber on a lot of the hard surfaces inside the range. After building this thing 30-some times, we've gotten pretty good at containing sound. So we did a good job in the beginning, but we have learned some tricks, and we've done it better and better. We're contiguous to residential in some of our locations, and we do just fine.
So just, so just to wrap up this line of questioning, if, if you're able to, can you analogize to a noise that someone would be used to hearing who hasn't ever visited a range? So for example, I think most of us have experienced hearing firecrackers either as a child or today. If I'm outside your building, is the sound that I'm gonna hear louder or softer than a firecracker?
It's a very dull pop, okay? It is not a bang, it's not a boom, it's nothing that would startle you. If, if someone was so moved to go to Mariville, Indiana, which I think would be your closest store, or down to Carmel, Indiana, in Indianapolis, if you stood outside the building, you might hear a very dull pop.
It, it sounds quite muffled, quite honestly, yeah.
I appreciate that. And then, last but not least, since I cut you off, let's talk about the exhaust. And can you explain a little bit more about what you do to try to prevent exhaust being expelled from your building into the adjacent surrounding areas?
Again, Kevin can explain that, but it's...
Yes, sir.
It's very sophisticated and big system.
We utilize Kerry's ventilation equipment. It's ventilation equipment that is very similar to what a hospital uses for an operating room. They want sterile air, they want clean air, and that's what we use to capture unspent gunpowder, the smoke, lead dust, et cetera, et cetera. So these, it's about the size of a tractor trailer, it's four, four pieces of machinery on the back of the building, and they are pushing air downstream away from the shooters one foot per second. So it takes that air downstream, runs it through a series of filters, 50 or 60 filters are inside there. They start with large bags, and they finish up with PEPA filters. And at our home office, we can measure the air pressure of every single unit in every single store. So we can see when those filters need to be changed, because we can tell by the air pressure. When those filters need to be changed, they are put in a plastic lined box. Box is sealed, and they are shipped off to a recycling company. We have to keep documentation of when the filters were changed, where they were sent to, and our receipt for showing proper disposal. Those things don't go in the dumpster, they go to a recycling facility. The lead shot that ends up in the trap, we vacuum out the rubber. The only thing left on the ground is the lead. The lead is shoveled up, put into 55 gallon drums, and it is recycled. We might, we can run a program where we can estimate, we've got 35,000 to 45,000 pounds of lead in, in the bullet trap, and we'll get a $20,000, $25,000 check for the weight of the lead to be recycled.
Okay, so that same person who, the individual who we described earlier, who's maybe in close proximity to your building on the, on the exterior, who's gonna hear that slight pop, will they be able to detect any noticeable odor?
Not a bit.
Okay.
The air leaves our building cleaner than when it came here.
Fantastic. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate your patience with me when I, as I ask these questions. So thank you. Mrs. DeMaye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
One last point, that Kerry's ventilation equipment package, it costs about $600,000.
Excellent, thank you for sharing that. Mrs. DeMaye.
Good evening. Can you tell me what the requirements of your safety instructors are?
Yeah, they go to the NRA, and they go through about 30 hours of training between the NRA and ourselves before they go in there. And we test the range safety officers' hearing and their blood lead levels every six months just to make sure we keep them safe and healthy as well.
Okay. And I have a couple of other questions, if you don't mind. Can independent safety instructors accompany someone there and not act as the range master, but instruct someone who is not well versed in firearms? Or do you have to use your range masters?
Absolutely. No, no, no. Well, listen, we're just all for gun safety. And if there's someone that wants to bring a friend in or another instructor, they're welcome to bring another instructor in. You know, if there's two people wanna be on that lane, there can be two people on that lane. We don't want two people side by side, so our range safety officers will keep an eye on the two people working together, but they are more than welcome to have someone else help them inside the shooting range.
Okay, and I have, I have one more question. Do you normally use paper targets or metal?
Paper, very much paper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Memelanti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Knuckles and Mr. Ali for your extremely in-depth presentation. Most of my colleagues have already asked most of my questions, but I did wanna do a follow-up regarding the range safety officer. Can you repeat your statement regarding the time that they will be on the premise?
If there is one person shooting, we have a range safety officer in the range. If there's 10 people shooting, we might very well have two. But if there is one person shooting, we'll have a range safety officer inside the range.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you again for joining us remotely. I thoroughly enjoyed your presentation and your thorough answers to our questions. Thank you.
Listen, we're excited about being in Mishawaka. We'd love the opportunity to be there. Indiana's been good to us, and we would like to grow. So if you guys want us, we're, we're excited about being there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Memelanti. Other questions for the petitioners? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If so, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Mark Addy, 5880 Park Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. And I'm a principal of Compton Addy. We are the owner and developer of this particular Shoot Point Blank. I don't wanna, I don't, I think I can get into the nitty gritty and certainly the details that Kevin and Ken have gone into, but I wanna go through a little bit of the support that we have for that. I've been in Cincinnati 35 years. Compton Addy, we're based in Cincinnati. We do single tenant development projects really all over the Midwest. We're about 10 different states that we're doing. I'm a recovering attorney, so the reputational part of this is very important to me. I've known the principals of Shoot Point Blank since I began my legal career many, many years ago, and know them to be just excellent folks. As we got into this and started looking to develop for Shoot Point Blank across the United States, we had to also get comfortable with this. I'm not a hunter. My family, we're not hunters, but we are recreational shooters, and we are very concerned for our own gun safety. When I heard and learned that they were the leading educator for gun safety in the United States, and not only they say it, they live it and they prove it, and for each location that we go out and operate, when we're dealing with local governments, we come and do presentations like this, and I would just really challenge you, if you had any questions, to even go back to any cities we're in. Because, you know, it's one thing to say it, but it's another to really go out and do what you say you're gonna do, and continue to do that in a very professional way. And that's what we continue to do. So we've got very comfortable, I mean, we're making, my partner and I are making the biggest investment in each one of these. These, these projects are $45 million each. We just opened one a few weeks ago in Chicago. We opened one in Detroit area tomorrow in Utica. We have another one going in Wisconsin up in Greenfield. We have a couple more in the Chicago area, and we're continuing to expand, two more in the Michigan area and another in outside Pittsburgh. So again, this is something that we have real conviction for, that they're doing the right thing and continue to do the right thing, and we continue to support them. So I wanted to come up from Cincinnati to let you know how strong we feel, and we'll be a good citizen to your community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Addy? Thank you. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone with us this evening in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Yes, Mr. Compton.
I wanna thank all the, the men who came up and spoke, and spoke online to us tonight. I had several questions, but you answered them all before, before I got to them. I strongly believe with the weapons we have in our society today, that anything we can do to educate people about gun safety and about how to handle weapons is, is a positive thing. So I appreciate the fact that, that besides gun sales, that you promote gun safety and gun safety programs. I also wanna, for the record, Mr. President, state that Mr. Doug Compton is not a relative of mine, and I have no relationship to the Compton Addy organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Memelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0.
Thank you.
Congratulations, well.
Good luck.
Welcome.
And with that, we will move into...
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We will now move into ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-39, an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning classification therefor. This is annexation and rezoning for 1245212434, Lincoln Way East, from I-1 to C-1 General Commercial in I-1 Light Industrial. Vote only this evening.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-39, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion should be presented to the council as a whole. This is, this is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second, motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Memelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yep.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. And with that, as was stated earlier, we have held a public hearing on this matter at our previous council meeting in compliance with state law. So at this point, we'll open the floor for any additional questions or comments from the council. Hearing none, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Memelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into privilege of the floor, and members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Good evening.
My name is Joe Laurie. I can't even begin.
Sir, if you could state your address for the record.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I live at 532 West Brown Avenue, over by the Midwest Gun Store.
Okay.
Not too far. I've been a resident of Mishawaka for seven, eight years. I went from Runaway Bay, I don't know if you're familiar with the apartment complex, Runaway Bay, to, I ended up renting a house on, not too far from the address, around It did this, I don't wanna take too much of your time, but to make a long story short, I've been picked on, my family been picked on by the police. This has been going on, this has been going on way too long. Police sits outside my house, the city comes by with code enforcement come by. I keep my house, the grass, the trees, I try to keep it where it need to be. City code enforcement come by, he nicks, "Hey, I'm..." You know, edging me to, to, to say or do something. Black car, I don't know his name, one of your city cars, 100, he gets 100 on the side of the car. Anyway, that's one of the things that, that annoys the hell out of me. I'm a voter, my family's all voters, and we do campaign if we have to. Pass that. So now I live on Brown Avenue. I'm not gonna get too caught up in a case that I just got acquitted of, that I was, my whole family was, was out of control and out of line about the situation. Detective Yoda, he's a, he's a Mishawaka cop, pretty much lied on a, on a, on a case that you guys might need to look into. I went up to the police department to try to set up a meeting with the, with the chief. I contacted somebody, one of your city attorneys or whatever, to have a meeting. My thing is, I'd rather start here. If I can't get it rectified and get it fixed, then I'm gonna go announce to the news, contacting an attorney, and to get it to stop. Like I said, I did beat a case with the city of Mishawaka. So hopefully, somebody can get back with me, we can, we can try to figure out how to resolve this, to try to get the police to stop. If I can't get it to stop, it's, it's, I'm gonna get it to stop. So I don't know what can be done, that's why I'm here tonight, to get it to stop.
Well, I can appreciate your concerns, and I'll try to address your question. As the council, we are the legislative body for the city. We do not have day-to-day control over the operation of the police department, nor the code enforcement department, or any of the departments of the city. Doesn't mean that we're trying to wash our hands or avoid what goes on, it's just that with regard to the work that they do in directing their work, that's the role of the administration. So I would encourage you to have a conversation and some interaction. It sounds like you have some, let me finish. Let me finish. I think it's important for you to address those concerns to the administration. I like the reference that you made to our Corporation Legal Council, I would think that would be a good first step for this type of conversation.
Yeah, that's why I came.
And then, that would be, I think, a better vehicle to try to address your concerns than anything that we could do as a legislative body, because it's just simply beyond our control to try to address what you... control to try to address what you are sharing with us this evening.
My, my thing is, but I want the, whoever's running it, the mayor, the, the city, the attorney, I want them to know what's been going on with the police. Police antagonizing certain, and I'm not just getting blacks, because I, I can speak for me and my family and what they've done to us. We've been terrorized. So, like I said, I beat a case, and now's the next step. What am I going to do? Either we can talk about it, or I can go a different direction, how to get it to stop. You know what I mean?
And again, I can understand your concern, we all could. And I think the next best step, the most effective way to deal with it, is to have that conversation with Mr. Hinkle, our, our Corporation Counsel, so that they can learn more about the specific facts, because what you're sharing with us is just a summary, and I appreciate...
Absolutely. I don't want to go off into it, because I don't know what direction I'm going to go.
I absolutely appreciate the fact that you're sensitive to the time element, and quite frankly, some of it probably is not appropriate to talk about in this forum. So, again, thank you for having that attitude. But I think having a discussion where the facts can be shared, and then some follow-up can take place, is my suggestion to you on how to deal with it.
Well, I, I went to the police department. They don't have an open-door policy, like people can't, I'm, I'm a resident, how come you can't have a complaint? Come down and talk to me. Don't schedule me for two weeks out to, if there's an issue going on, you know, let's rectify this issue, you know, right then and there. Don't schedule me out for two weeks, three weeks to, to meet with you, you know?
And the specifics of how their process works would be beyond the scope of my knowledge, but I do know that it is very common for our police department to hear from residents, even non-residents, with regard to concerns that they have about the operation of the police department, and it's been my experience, and I'm not trying to tell you that you're wrong with what you're saying, but it's been my experience that our police department and all of our administration, quite frankly, is very responsive to listening to those concerns. Now, doesn't mean that people are always going to agree with regard to the outcome or what happened, but there at least needs to be an open door, an open ear to listen to what you have to say, and then what happens from that point forward remains to be seen. But you want to turn to your right, Mr. Hinkle, our Corporation Counsel, happens to be with us this evening, so not right this moment.
Yep.
But after we're done with our meeting, I would encourage you and Mr. Hinkle to have a conversation about where you go from here and how you can move this forward.
Your city attorney called me back, but he, he called me back Friday, because I was trying to set up a meeting with whoever, who I needed to talk to Friday. Your city attorney called me back about defending the case that I beat with the city of Mishawaka. He called me back Friday, and nobody has responded since then. But my thing is, I'd rather start right here versus getting on national TV and say, "Hey."
Oh.
You know, I, I'd rather, I'd rather start with the, and go up the, and go up the, you know what I mean, kind of idea.
And I appreciate that. All of the things that you've identified remain your right to do. As an attorney, I never, myself, I never look down my nose at anybody who wants to talk to an attorney. I, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But I, I, again, I have found, I think all of us have found, that our administration and all of the people who work in our various departments are very responsive and willing to listen to someone, even if they can't immediately fix the problem. So, I'd encourage you to have that conversation with Mr. Hinkle, and then the future will tell us where we go from here.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. With that, we'll move into unfinished business, of which there is none that I am aware of. New business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Memelanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to give a brief reminder about this month's Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch meeting. We'll be going off-site for this meeting. It will be Wednesday the seventeenth, this Wednesday, at seven PM. It will be held at the St. Joseph County Juvenile Center. Judge Chickowitz has welcomed us with open arms, and will be providing beverages and snacks.
West End Bakery?
I cannot confirm or deny that, Mr. Emmons, but there will be some sort of beverages and snacks provided. The location is one thousand South Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana. We will meet in the lobby. If you do need a ride, Mr. and Mrs. Mullins and myself will be willing to take anybody that may need a ride. If you do need a ride, please come to Twin Branch School in Mishawaka at six-twenty, and we will provide transportation for you. All are welcome. Hope to see you this Wednesday, the seventeenth, at seven PM.
Thank you. Other new business. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have my monthly meeting at Thursday, the eighteenth, at St. Babel's. Will be featured Mr. Ken Prince, our city planner. We talking about development in Mishawaka, not only in the city, but in the outskirts of Mishawaka. It should be a very interesting meeting. Again, that's at seven o'clock at St. Babel's. Please enter from the parking lot. Also, we'll have refreshments from the West End Bakery. And that, so everybody's invited, so please plan on attending. It should be a very, very interesting meeting. Mr. Prince guaranteed to me that it would be a very interesting meeting. He's going to have a presentation that everybody will enjoy. So, it's our pleasure to have Mr. Prince there, and look forward to having anybody that would like to come. Again, that's at seven o'clock, St. Babel's Church, in the school building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other new business? Hearing none, then if there is no other new business coming before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Move.
No move.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.